Good evening. I'm Alan Joins, Mayor of Winston-Salem, and I called to order this June 20th meeting of Winston-Salem City Council. And would ask the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Mundy.
Present.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
And Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you very much. Would you join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Would you join the city council and me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sergeant Arms tonight, Lieutenant John Morris. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight. We have three honorariums to present tonight. We will have item H1, please.
Item H1, resolution honoring city manager Lee D. Garrity. Whereas, Lee D. Garrity has served the citizens of the city of Winston-Salem since December 3rd, 1990. And whereas, Mr. Garrity joined the city staff as a senior budget and evaluation analyst and was subsequently promoted to organizational effectiveness director on December 5th, 1997, and to assistant city manager on April 30th, 2001. And whereas, Mr. Garrity was appointed city manager on July 14th, 2006, and has diligently and capably served in this capacity for almost 17 years. And whereas, Mr. Garrity adapted city government to better serve Winston-Salem citizens to include creation of the CityLink Citizen Service Call Center, an establishment of the Office of Community Assistance to assist citizens in doing business with the city. And whereas, Mr. Garrity modernized city government to make operations more efficient and to meet the emerging needs of the 21st century, to include combining the City-County Inspections Division and the City-County Planning Department into the Department of Planning and Development Services, combining streets and stormwater into the Field Operations Department, combining the minority women's business enterprises staff and the small business assistance staff into the Office of Business Inclusion and Advancement, creating the Office of Sustainability, and adding a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Division to the Human Relations Department. And whereas, Mr. Garrity provided steady, innovative leadership through many difficult challenges, including the Great Recession, the COVID-19 pandemic, and implementation of the 2014-2018 bond projects, all while ensuring that the city remained on sound financial footing and maintained the highest possible credit rating from all major rating agencies. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Winston-Salem hereby honor Mr. Lee D. Garrity and express their deepest gratitude for the years of dedicated service to the citizens of Winston-Salem. Be it further resolved that a portrait of Mr. Lee D. Garrity be displayed in City Hall along with the portraits of Mr. C.E. Perkins, Mr. John M. Gold, Mr. Orville W. Powell, and Mr. Bryce A. Stewart, previous city managers of the city of Winston-Salem.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 And that is unanimous. Lee, congratulations. Thank you. We're not going to give this to you tonight. We're going to present it on Monday at the event there.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Joins, Member Tim Adams, members of council. Well, I'll save most of my comments till Monday, but it has been a real pleasure serving all of you and the citizens for the last, well, really 33 years, but the last 17 as manager. People ask me what things I'm going to miss the most, and I think I'm going to miss the most is the people. All of you, all the citizens, all the employees, and all those relationships. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lee. Right, we have H2, please.
Item H2, resolution honoring the service of Richard Geiger to the Winston-Salem community. Whereas, Richard Geiger is an accomplished hospitality industry professional with more than 40 years of destination marketing, strategic planning, staff development, sales, and sales training. And whereas, Mr. Geiger has held top sales and marketing positions at the Orlando Orange County Convention and Visitors Bureau, as well as the CEO for the Buffalo Niagara Convention and Visitors Bureau, responsible for managing the Convention Center, Sports Corporation, and the Film Commission. And whereas, Mr. Geiger, as president of Visit Winston-Salem since 2010, has worked strategically and tirelessly to promote, market, and sell Winston-Salem as a desirable destination and place to visit, meet, and live for the economic benefit of the entire community while overseeing a staff of 17 and an annual budget of $6 million. And whereas, Mr. Geiger has been a strong advocate for the continued economic development of downtown Winston-Salem, has proudly served on the boards of the Downtown Winston-Salem Partnership, the Greater Winston-Salem Chamber of Commerce, and the Arts Council of Winston-Salem Forsyth County, and was committed to the $20 million reinvention of the Benton Convention Center. And whereas, Richard Geiger is the dedicated husband to Tracy Bromley Geiger, proud father of their two sons, Matthew and Andrew, and a lifelong fan of the New York Yankees and New York Rangers and New York Giants. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Winston-Salem hereby honor Mr. Geiger and express their deepest gratitude for his years of dedicated service to the local travel and tourism community and the citizens of Winston-Salem.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Rich, thank you for being here tonight. Councilmember Larson has the resolution. We're going to give it to you at your event on Friday, if that's okay. But stand up, Rich. Let us recognize you.
Make sure he shows up.
I promise we've got the resolution all framed. We just...
The ink's still wet.
We're trying to raise the funds to pay for it.
Just don't take them to tourism. Mayor Joins. Mayor Pro Tim Adams. Councilmembers. Mr. Larson, who's a member of my board. Mr. McIntosh is a member of my board. I'm sorry. Let me just thank you. I have loved my time at Visit Winston-Salem and working with the city, and the job has made a lot easier with the incredible support we've gotten from the city. The mayor has been an advocate for travel and tourism and the business community since the day I got here, as had all the members of the council, which was clearly evident in the investment and the vision that the council made when they invested $20 million into the renovation, reinvention of the Benton Convention Center, which has truly paid off its dividends to both the hotels, restaurants, attractions, and all the other visitor attractions in downtown. I do also want to acknowledge the incredible support we've gotten from all the city agencies and departments, in particular, the law enforcement. I see Chief Penn here.
Got to give a special shout out.
The chief, Assistant Chief Weaver, who has been an incredible support. The business community, the hospitality industry, and I could, I've never been more proud than working with the city and men and women wear blue here. So, thank you very much. Lastly, I don't know if, maybe I drove the city manager out a little early, too. I mean, to be able to work with the city manager and assistant city manager Ben Rao in a very big way, I've learned and gained enormous respect. Learned patience at times when you've had this pushing New Yorker behind you trying to get some things done. But both these gentlemen have been a complete, a true asset to me, and Ben, I've really enjoyed our relationship and our friendship that we have garnered over the last 13 years. Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and I'm sure, and things are in great hands at the CVB, and will continue to drive home economic impact for this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Item H3, please.
Item H3, proclamation declaring the month of July as National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month, 2023. Whereas, a sense of belonging and inclusion in communities is vital for the well-being of mental health of Black Indigenous people of color, BIPOC. And whereas, community-led spaces such as cultural hubs, areas in which people of the specific cultural background have come together to live, provide services, or connect with one another are vital sources of belonging that promote overall mental health and wellness. And whereas, connection with one's culture and community is key to supporting overall mental health, and individuals who have strong connections to their communities have better mental health outcomes, including lower rates of suicide, violence, and feelings of isolation. And whereas, no one knows a community better than those within the community itself, in order to move toward a more mentally healthy future, community-led action must be prioritized and sustained. And whereas advocating for mentally healthy environments must prioritize access for all, strong community support requires an overall understanding that every person is deserving of a healthy environment and has a role in the wellness of those around them. And whereas, the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Winston-Salem Forsyth County are asked to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of BIPOC, mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health through community-led action and organizing, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all BIPOC people with mental health conditions. Now therefore, I, J. Allen Joins, Mayor of the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim July 2023 as National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month.
Thank you. And Andy Hagler, the executive director of the Mental Health Association of Forsyth County, is here. I hope.
Andy, on behalf of the city council and the city of Winston-Salem, we want to thank you for helping us to recognize this issue facing our community as well as across the country, and hopefully can help to bring some awareness to it and bring some solutions. So, thank you for all the work that you do at Forsyth County Mental Health Association. And if you'd like to say a word, Derek.
Sure, sure. To the city council and to the mayor and all the staff here with the city of Winston-Salem, just want to thank you for your support. And thank you for your support through all your other means for our most vulnerable citizens here in Forsyth County, ranging from the continuum of care to the plan to end chronic homelessness, to the support where I have some great esteemed people from the city of Winston-Salem Police Department for our crisis intervention team trainings, and most recently for the implementation of the BEAR program, the Behavioral Evaluation and Response Program. So, thank you for caring for all of our citizens with mental illness and especially for our most vulnerable citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Tonight's agenda of the city council is comprised of the following items. They have the general agenda and the consent agenda. The practice of the council is to take the consent agenda as the first order of business. Items on this agenda have been unanimously approved by committee of the city council or are being submitted in accordance with established city procedure. There'll be no discussion of the items on this agenda unless the council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered individually. Items not removed from the consent agenda will be enacted with one motion. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed tomorrow at 9:30 a.m. and again tomorrow at 9:00 p.m. Of course, copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings, are always available online at the city's website, and just click on the "Watch Meetings" online option. Councilmembers, are there any items you wish to approve, remove from the consent agenda?
Move for approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Adams moves approval of the consent agenda. It's seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. All those in favor, please vote yes. And anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. We'll now return to the general agenda, which is comprised of a number of items. We'll start with a public hearing on the city's annual budget, 2023-2024 budget for the city of Winston-Salem. And there are three other items listed as public hearings, which is public hearings on a street closure, on the demolition assessment roll, as well as Salem College revenue bonds. When the public hearings call, persons in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. If no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing, and the city council will consider the item. Would ask that the speakers limit your comments to no more than three minutes. The FY 23-24 budget items, including the resolution amending Article 2 of the City of Winston-Salem Personnel Resolution, the annual appropriation and tax levy ordinances, and the project budget ordinances, as well as the 2024-29 capital plan are items that will be considered with the budget. There are two resolutions regarding the funding at 1001 and 1007 South Marshall Street and the recapture and reallocation of certain CARES Act funds. There are eight items related to appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions, as well as the public comment period. The public comment period is a time set aside once per month where citizens are invited to voice their opinions on matters that are germane to city government. When a public comment period is called, each speaker will be given three minutes for comment, and the total comment period is limited to 30 minutes. May we have item G1, please?
Item G1, public hearing on the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget for the city of Winston-Salem.
Before we do that, I'll ask our budget and valuation director, Mr. Tesh, to give us a brief summary of the budget for this year.
Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, members of the city council. We do have a very brief presentation on the fiscal year '24 recommended budget from the Finance Committee. You will see that the total recommended budget for fiscal year '24 totals just under $608 million. This is about $2 million higher than the proposed budget and includes the changes that the Finance Committee made at its June 8th workshop. Those include increased pay for firefighters, as well as contributions to additional community agencies, additional pay, one-time supplemental pay for WISTA. Although, we do have increases to the budget. It is a decrease from year to year. You see of $20 million. We have talked about this. The vast majority of that decrease is related to the lobs package of $55 million that was passed in a previous year. So, we do have operational increases. As you see, a majority of that can be found in compensation and supplies and services. There are no net new positions in the budget. However, we have reduced 50 vacant police officer positions in order to help pay for the increases in the police pay plan. Supplies and services have been up relative to inflation and many of the other things that are a cost of doing business in fiscal year '24. For taxpayers and residents, the largest changes in this budget from a taxes and fees perspective are a 3.9% increase or 2.5 cents per $100 of valuation on the property tax rate, a 7% increase in water and sewer rates effective in July, and then an 8% increase in stormwater rates that would be effective in January to help pay for both operations and capital for stormwater. In terms of where that puts us with taxes and fees compared to the other four largest cities in North Carolina, it makes us a little more expensive than Charlotte, slightly less than Greensboro, and pretty well below Durham and Raleigh. This is using median home values in all of those cities, and so that does affect how property taxes are calculated on this chart. That is the brief overview that I have from a staff perspective. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions, Mr. Tesh? We have asked you a lot of questions over the past month or so, so I think we're probably exhausted of those. Thank you, Mr. Tesh. We'll go to the public hearing now. Mr. Dan Bessie, County Commissioner Dan Bessie. We're glad to see you back in this chamber, Mr. Bessie.
Pleasure to be here. Brother Clark has warned me not to run overtime, so let me get straight.
I've got the mute button here.
For the record, my name is Dan Bessie. My address is 412 Auburndale Street in Winston-Salem, 27104. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tim, members of the city council, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
I'm here with brief comments on the transportation part of the budget, especially its public transit element. This was a particular focus of mine during my terms of service on this council. And as a newly elected member of the Forsyth County Commission, I've been tapped by that body as the county's representative to the Winston-Salem Urban Area Transportation Advisory Committee, or TAC, and the Piedmont Authority for Regional Transportation Part. I want to thank this council for maintaining Winston-Salem's historic commitment to the thousands of residents who depend on transit more than a million and a half times each year, even during the depths of the COVID pandemic and its aftermath. I've been studying ridership data over time, and the substantial drop in WISTA ridership due to the pandemic's disruptions has already begun to rebound, and is projected to rebound further over the coming year. I'm confident that ride numbers will grow more once WISTA has been able to finish addressing the driver shortage created by the pandemic and related workforce disruptions. As you know, WISTA was forced to suspend night service on nearly half of its 31 fixed routes due to that driver shortage, and that has continued to adversely impact ridership numbers. By comparison, part ridership is recovering somewhat more quickly, especially on its Winston-Salem-serving routes, in part because it did not have to cut back service so much or for so long. Naturally, any system has opportunities for more efficiency. And WISTA is currently studying possible ways to shift some resources among routes and service times in order to ensure best service and best value to the public. But let me close with one more thought. Institutions and public services which disproportionately benefit less affluent members of our community are always more vulnerable to cuts and criticisms. We should never make assumptions about costs and benefits without getting out and seeing for ourselves. It is my personal experience that our buses are safe, their drivers and riders are courteous, and I personally find it far more relaxing riding with them than spending the same amount of time having to personally deal with driving and traffic that is often neither safe nor courteous. Try it, you may like it. I look forward to continuing to work with members of this council and city and WISTA staff to further improve public transit in our city, county, and region. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Bessie. Appreciate it.
Doug Simmons.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, members of the council. Doug Simmons, president of the Winston-Salem Professional Firefighters Association. I live at 2610 Greencrest Drive, 27106. I'm here tonight to say thank you. You all heard our concerns a few weeks ago over our starting pay issues, and you took action on it through the amended budget, and that is greatly appreciated. We really appreciate Winston-Salem being proactive and seeing the value in maintaining our employees and having the ability to be competitive with our surrounding agencies so that we can recruit the best possible candidates for our department. So again, thank you all very much. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard on the budget? All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and we'll go to item G2, please.
Item G2, annual appropriation and tax levy ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, for the fiscal year 2023-2024.
Make an ask finance chair, Mr. Clark.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion for just a second. I would make just a few comments. I move to approve the annual appropriation and tax levy ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, for the fiscal year 2023-2024, which sets the tax rate at 66.1 cents per 100 of assessed value.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Clark, seconded by Councilmember Taylor. Councilmember Clark, go ahead.
Just very briefly, it is a $600 million-plus budget. I'll just make a few comments on it. We've had a number of meetings where we've been in depth on it. First off, we are including this around a 4% increase in property tax, which I think is very reasonable, given the tremendous amount of inflation we have experienced over the last couple of years. We were told during the presentations that it costs 40% more to repave a road now than it did just two years ago. The other comment I'll make on the budget is there are certain core services that we have to provide because we're the only folks that provide it. And I think the absolute core of that apple are our police and fire. We have gotten behind in salaries and have made significant adjustments in this budget to deal with it, and roughly 2/3 of that 2.5 cents is to address that. Some other comments I would make, and I just can't allow Mr. Bessie to get out without making a comment on the transit system. I've been a thorn in his side for 16 years. We'll continue tonight. Since 2012, 10 years ago, the ridership is down 60%, yet we run as many buses, more buses now than we did then. We need to take a fundamental look at our bus system, how we do it, where we do it. My personal feeling is we need to somehow optimize the routes. But with 60% fewer people riding, and I would take COVID as an excuse two years ago, but we're in 2023 now. What we're finding is a lot less people working downtown or wherever it may be. Certainly needs to be looked at. Second area I would comment on, we've traditionally operated some enterprise funds where we keep separate balances. I'm not sure these are as needed or as necessary as they have been. Two I would mention is the parking fund and the public facilities fund. They were set up separately because they were supposed to be self-supporting, generating income. That is not the case. With both these budgets, most of their budget is operating, so I think we need to take a look at that. And lastly, I will mention, I think we, as a council, need to take a look at some more long-term, multi-year budgeting. We only by law budget for one year, but oftentimes we make decisions that have multi-year implications. And I think we certainly do that from a capital budget, but from an operating budget, I think we need to be looking at that. With that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any other comments, questions? I would just say a good job on behalf of the Finance Committee. With the tax increase proposed, with the water and sewer rate increase, as well as the stormwater, the impact to the median homeowner is about less than $9 per month. So, as Councilmember Clark said, that's doing pretty good, given the huge inflation that we've gotten hidden there. So therefore, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Clark. Item G3.
Item G3, project budget ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, for the fiscal year 2023-2024.
Councilmember Clark.
I move to approve the project budget ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, for the fiscal year 2023-24, authorizing appropriations for certain special revenue funds, capital projects, enterprise capital projects, internal service capital projects, and capital equipment funds.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? If not, that's seconded by Minister Taylor. All those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item G4.
Item G4, motion to excuse councilmembers McIntosh, Cipio, and Mundy from item G5.
Move to approve G4 and the following councilmembers.
Your second?
Second.
We've, Mayor Pro Tim Adams making a motion seconded by Councilmember Clark, and go ahead, Councilmember Clark.
Yeah, just briefly, you're going to see some motions tonight that we don't normally, or haven't historically done. There was a change in state law where if any of us are associated with an organization that's being voted on, we have to recuse ourselves, and they are. A number of folks up here, including those three and myself and others, that are members particularly of certain trade associations, civic organizations, and so you'll see some odd motions to exclude various people at various times. Anyway, that's what we're up to here.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. opposed, vote no. Yeah, you vote. Well. Should they vote? Excuse. Yes, you can vote to excuse yourself, yes. Thank you. We are excusing now Councilmember Mundee, Cipio, and McIntosh from voting on the next item. Item G5.
Item G5, annual appropriation and tax levy ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 2023-2024, for anticipated revenues and expenditures related to services provided by the Downtown Winston-Salem Partnership and adopting a tax rate of 9 cents per $100 of assessed value in the Downtown Winston-Salem Business Improvement District.
Move for approval.
I gotta make the move.
No, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Clark.
My one day to be famous here.
That's right.
Okay. I move to approve the annual appropriation and tax levy ordinance for the anticipated revenues and expenditures related to services provided by the Downtown Winston-Salem Partnership for the city of Winston-Salem for the fiscal year 2023-24, which sets the tax rate of 9 cents per 100 of assessed value in the Downtown Winston-Salem Business Improvement District.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Clark, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Adams. Any discussion? Not all those in favor, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous with three council members being excused from voting. Item G6.
Item G6, motion to excuse Councilmember Taylor from items G7 and G8.
Move for approval of G6 to remove Councilmember Taylor from items G7 and G8.
Second. Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Adams and seconded by Councilmember McIntosh to excuse Councilmember Taylor from items 7 and 8. All those in favor of this motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Go down to item G7.
Item G7, annual appropriation tax levy ordinance for fiscal year 2023-2024, authorizing the city's annual operating appropriations for anticipated revenues and expenditures for marketing and communications to include advertising books, magazines, and periodicals by fund together with a financial plan for internal service funds.
Councilmember Clark.
I move to approve the annual appropriation and tax levy ordinance for advertising and select books, magazine, and periodical budgets for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 2023-24.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Clark, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Adams. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous with Mr. Taylor abstaining, being excused from voting, rather. Item G8.
Item G8, project budget ordinance for fiscal year 2023-2024, authorizing appropriations for expenditures and revenues on advertising books, magazines, and periodicals for fiscal year 2023-24, and thereafter for select special revenue funds.
Mr. Clark.
I move to approve the project budget ordinance for advertising and select books, magazines, and periodical budgets for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 2023-24.
Second. Second.
Second.
More motion by Mr. Clark, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Adams. Any discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That is unanimous with Mr. Taylor being abstained on that.
He was supposed to be excused.
The record shows that Mr. Taylor did abstain from voting on this. All right, item G9.
Item G9, motion to excuse Councilmembers Mundee and Cipio from voting on item G10.
Move for approval of item G9 to excuse Councilmembers Mundee and Cipio from voting on G10.
Second. Motion seconded. Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Adams, seconded by Councilmember McIntosh to excuse Mayor, Councilmember Mundee and Cipio. Any discussion? Not all those in favor, vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is approved with six members voting yes and two excused from voting. Item G10.
Item G10, annual appropriation tax levy ordinance for fiscal year 2023-2024, authorizing the city's annual operating appropriations for anticipated revenues and expenditures for Caladium Mixer Community Maker Space, Piedmont Authority for Regional Transportation and Family Services.
Mr. Clark.
I move to approve the annual appropriation and tax levy ordinance for anticipated revenues and expenditures related to Caladium Mixer Community Market Space, Piedmont Authority for Regional Transportation and Family Services for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 2023-24.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Clark, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Adams. Any discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that motion passes unanimously with Mr. Mundee and Councilmember Cipio being excused from voting on that. Item G11.
Item G11, motion to excuse Mayor Pro Tem Adams and Councilmembers Clark, Cipio, and Larson from voting on item G12.
Is there a motion? Second.
I'm supposed to read this one?
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, motion to excuse Mayor Pro Tem Adams and Councilmembers Clark, Cipio, and Larson from voting on item G12.
Second. Second. Thank you. Motion by Councilmember McIntosh, seconded by Councilmember Mundee. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that motion passes unanimously with a... See that again.
Wait, wait.
At five, yes.
That's just a motion to abstain, to recuse.
Yeah.
Oh, this is a motion just to recuse.
The motion is 12. Right.
I'll vote for it then.
All right, so let's go back to, we'll do a hand vote on item G11. This is a motion to excuse Mayor Pro Tem Adams and Councilmember Clark and Larson, and you said Cipio is... Okay. All those in favor of that motion to excuse them, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, no. And that is unanimous to excuse. Okay, item G12.
Item G12, annual appropriation tax levy ordinance for fiscal year 2023-2024, authorizing the city's annual operating appropriations for anticipated revenues and expenditures for Piedmont Triad Regional Council, the National League of Cities, River Run, and the North Carolina League of Municipalities.
Councilmember McIntosh, I believe, has this motion. G12.
G12.
Annual appropriation. I move for the annual appropriation tax levy ordinance for fiscal year 2023-24, authorizing the city's annual operating appropriations for anticipated revenues and expenditures for Piedmont Triad Regional Council, National League of Cities, River Run, and the North Carolina League of Municipalities.
Second. Thank you. It's a motion by Councilmember McIntosh, seconded by Councilmember Taylor. Any discussion? Not all those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And we have four votes to approve the motion and four excuses there.
Yeah.
So we have four votes, Madam Attorney. Is it a...
But it's the majority of those who are able to vote.
To vote, okay, so we're good.
But make sure we got the folks who were excused versus folks who voted. You got it? Okay.
Yeah, it's good.
It should have been accused. Why did I keep coming up with these things?
He came up as abstained.
All right. We'll move now to items, item G13.
Item G13, motion to excuse Councilmembers Cipio, Burke, and Larson from voting on item G14.
Is it a motion?
I move that approve the motion G13 to excuse Councilmembers Cipio, Burke, and Larson from voting on G14.
Second. Second. Thank you. Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Adams, seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no.
Would it be better to do a hand vote?
Okay, we'll do a oral vote on this one. This is a motion to excuse Mr. Councilmember Cipio, Burke, and Larson. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. We'll then go to item G14.
Item G14, project budget ordinance for fiscal year 2023-2024, authorizing appropriations for expenditures and revenues for federal housing funds to include Community Development Block Grant Fund, Home Investment Partnership Trust Fund, Supportive Housing Grants Fund, and Hopewa Fund.
Councilmember Clark.
I move to approve the project budget ordinance for anticipated revenues and expenditures for federal housing funds for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 2023-24.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Clark, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Adams.
We still have the vote for the last one.
Yeah, we're still showing G13 up here.
I just said, cut it off.
Can we show hands?
Okay, all right. All those in favor of the motion to approve item G14, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? And that is unanimous. Thank you. Now we go to item G15.
Item G15, resolution approving the capital plan for fiscal year 2023-2024 through 2028-2029 as a financial planning guide.
Okay, Councilmember Clark.
I move to approve a resolution approving the capital plan for fiscal years 2023-24 through 2028-29.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Clark, seconded by Councilmember Cipio. Any discussion regarding the capital plan? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, no. That is unanimous. Thank you. Item G16.
Item G16, resolution amending Article II of the city of Winston-Salem Personnel Resolution, adjusting positions, classifications, pay grades, and pay plans, authorizing merit pay adjustments, and one-time supplemental pay for city employees.
Councilmembers, now we do have a revised resolution that's been presented by Assistant City Manager Taylor. And Councilmember Clark.
I move to approve an amended resolution as provided by staff, amending Article II of the city of Winston-Salem Personnel Resolution, adjusting positions, classifications, pay grades, and pay plans, authorizing merit pay adjustments, and one-time supplemental pay for city employees. The amended resolutions provided by staff removes pay classification and grade changes for certain human resources positions that were originally in the resolution recommended by Finance Committee.
Is there a second?
That's a second. I'd like to make some comments.
Motion by Councilmember Clark, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Adams. Mayor Pro Tem.
Dr. Barnett, please come up. The one thing I want everyone to understand, again, we can't, as a council and a city and a business operation, we can no longer make changes to our employees' benefits, their workspace, because it ultimately affects their quality of life. So when we're making these decisions about your money and your work, we need to be engaging with you. We at least need to let you weigh in, and on top of that, we need to make sure you understand what it is that we're doing. Going forward, we don't want to work in a vacuum. The new order of the day is you have to allow your workforce to understand the policies that we implement that affect their quality of life. Mr. Barnett, could you just give a brief summary of what this resolution means, please?
Yes, ma'am. All right, so the resolution that you have before you, it is an amendment to the city of Winston-Salem Personnel Resolution. What this will do is to... What this will do is it will adjust certain classifications that we have on our pay plan. So it's important to understand, these are not new positions. These are all positions that have been adjusted in terms of the classification. So we are adding the classification or removing the classification from the pay plan, but we are not adding or removing positions and FTEs to the city budget. So this resolution in particular, as you will see, we added in the Bear Team Crisis Counselors, as well as that Director. We've added a Community Engagement Manager, the Fleet Services Director, Fleet Services Supervisor, Housing Development Director, Neighborhood Services Director, Neighborhood Services Manager, Police Staffing Specialist, and Senior Utilities Electrical Specialist. From the pay plan, we have removed the Assistant Community Development Director, as well as the Community and Business Development Director and Deputy Community and Business Development Director. Those classifications are no longer utilized as names of departments have changed, et cetera. And then the final one here is the Deputy Director of Transportation. Transportation Department now has two Assistant Directors and does not foresee the need for a Deputy Director, so we're removing that classification from the pay plan as well. The other thing that this resolution does is that it adjusts and it asks for this council to allow for city employees on their merit increases this year to see a 4.5% increase for employees who meet expectations, a 5.5% increase for employees who exceed expectations, and a 6.5% increase for employees who have provided outstanding service to the city of Winston-Salem.
Another thing that I made a phone call discussion today is that that part down there where, if you'll go to page two, where it talks about $2,000, the bonus for part-time, temporary, full-time, for those making less than $100,000, and $1,000 for the same for those making more than $100,000. We mistakenly, I think, or probably, we had a date set in here that said that this is for people that are employed, that came to work before December 31, 2022. Is that not correct, Mr. Dr. Barnett?
Yes, ma'am. It was originally intentioned to be almost like a retention incentive for those employees that were on staff by the end of last year.
But unfortunately, again, this goes back to why it's so important that we now have to start educating our team as to when we are making these decisions that evidently employees started reaching out to me, wanting to know that, letting us know that they came to work right after January the first, and because they didn't meet that timeline, that they would not be eligible for the bonus. We're talking about roughly, how many people, Dr. Barnett?
About 160 people.
160 people out of how many total employees right now, roughly?
We're at about 2,200.
Out of 2,200 people. But the real thing that we have to understand is we cannot treat groups, departments, and other things differently from the others. If we give bonuses to our employees, we have to give bonuses, I feel, to everybody, because they're coming to work every day. Those people, we've really, what you told us the numbers the other day, we have now garnered 150-plus new employees since the beginning of the year through our marketing and through other things, word of mouth, our employees recommending people. So why would we treat them any different when they get up every morning and come to the place that you come to? So I think if we're going to build morale, the one team going forward in the new world of work that we all live in, we have to seriously start looking at how do we treat everybody equitably. And like I tell people, the most important thing to me when I was working was my money and my benefits. when I was working was my money and my benefits and the quality of space that I worked in. So going forward, I communicated to Dr. Barnett and Mr. Taylor that we will be having meetings whenever. I was suggesting, I know we got a new city manager coming on, but it's for the good of the order if we have meetings to allow employees to weigh in on policies and rules and things that affect their job, their benefits, and their quality of life. And I don't know what that's going to look like. They're going to handle that and see what the new city manager and the council thinks. But I want to thank you all, and I hope the council will. Do I need to make an amendment? Or does the Chair of Finance or the Councilmember Clark have this in any?
Mr. Taylor, could you?
Adjustments.
Good evening. I'd like to mention Mayor Jones, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, other members of the council. I'd like to mention that there is another change that should be on this actual carve, and that is the bear positions actually are effective 12/1/22. So I just wanted to add that.
We just want to make sure the resolution and carve match.
Okay, so carve has made a change for that one.
Yeah, well, Ms. Abs, I would prefer we send it back to committee. How about somebody started work last week? Does that mean they get a $2,000 bonus?
Councilroom Chair, we can send it back to committee for more discussions so we can look at how do we balance it. But I was basically, and you're correct, but I was looking at those employees again that came J1, and they've been here now seven, six months, almost seven, that we need to just look at it, and I'll lend that to you. I'll defer to you and the committee.
Chairman, I would suggest that we probably go ahead and vote on this, and then we would bring, could bring it back in amendment later on to deal with it.
Okay.
All right, is that clear? All right, we do, the system is back up and working, I'm told. So any further discussion or question? Okay, we do have a...
I just want to ask city management to communicate this to the employees, that we are going to look at this, for those who had a concern.
Yep, good point. All right, very good. So the motion is to approve the resolution as presented with an understanding that we'll be bringing potential amendments to the Finance Committee later on. So all those in favor of that motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Barnett. All right, item G 17.
Item G 17, resolution modifying the City of Winston-Salem Post-Employment Healthcare Benefit Program to provide the Medicare Advantage Supplement to retired elected officials.
Mr. Clark.
I move to approve a resolution modifying the City of Winston-Salem Post-Employment Healthcare Benefit Program to provide the Medicare Advantage Supplement to retired elected officials.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Clark, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim. Any discussion? Not all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item G 18.
Item G 18, public hearing on resolution confirming assessment role for demolition of housing unfit for human habitation recommended by Finance Committee.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who wishes to be heard on this proposed assessment, demolition assessment, assessment role? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. And I did indicate coming Finance Committee, but I...
Move for approval of G 18.
Second. A move by Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item G 19.
Item G 19, public hearing of a petition to close and abandon a portion of Vest Mill Road located in Southwest Ward. Petition of Robert Carr, Vest Mill property owner.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who wishes to be heard on this proposed road closing? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. I assume this came from Public Works. So that's fine.
Do you want to go to the Councilmember of the ward for the motion?
Okay, Councilmember Monday, you're ready?
Yes, I make a motion to approve G 19, and then just a quick comment on what this is.
All right.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Monday, seconded by Councilmember McIntosh.
I don't know that it warrants a presentation, but just to explain to anyone listening that this is about an eighth of a mile at the end of Vest Mill that is being abandoned so that it can be incorporated into an apartment complex that has been previously approved through the zoning process.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Item G 20.
Item G 20, public hearing on resolution regarding the issuance by the Public Finance Authority of its revenue bonds in one or more series in the principal amount not to exceed 20 million for the purpose of financing and refinancing certain projects for the benefit of Salem Academy and College recommended by the Finance Committee.
Kelly, could you give us just a real quick, brief summary of what this is about, please?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Jones, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, and members of city council.
Good evening.
This is an item, the IRS code actually has an item that requires the city council to hold a public hearing and approve financing for these projects because they are within the city jurisdiction. The project is requested by Salem College, but city approval would not constitute an endorsement of the bonds or projects or obligate the city for payment of principal or premium or interest of the bonds. Doesn't obligate the city in any way. It's just a formality due to the IRS regulations.
Any questions, Mr. Lee? Thank you very much. Would entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Have you had the public here?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is anyone that wishes to be heard on this proposed financing? All right, seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. And now we entertain a motion.
Move for approval of G 20.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Cipio, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Adams. Any further discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Thank you. That is unanimous. Item G 21.
Item G 21, modification to approval of financial assistance to 1,001 South Marshall MM LLC for community development purposes pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160D-11311.
Thank you. Mr. Millet, if you give us a brief summary of this item.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor Jones, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, members of the council.
Good evening.
This item is to request, excuse me, is requesting a modification of an approval from council back in 2018 to assist with a project at 1,001 and now 1,007 South Marshall Street. I'll briefly run you through the, how it was originally approved and the current request. As it's, as approved in 2018, the total project cost for the 1,007 building was about $26 million. The $2 million of city funds needed to be used for hard construction costs specifically for public infrastructure and public enhancements. City funds would be dispersed in alternating tranches along with funds from other sources, and the developer was required to secure all financing before city funds were dispersed. The current request breaks the project down into two phases. Phase one is the 1,007 building, which is immediately adjacent to 1,001, with the project cost of 16.2 million. Phase two of the 1,001 building is 31.2 million. Rather than $2 million being made available entirely for the 1,007 building, this current item would allow $1 million to go, to be used in phase one, which again is the 1,007 building, and $1 million for phase two. The, for each phase, city dollars would be the last money into the project, and we would ensure that all the financing for, excuse me, all of the funding for both phases is in place. There is a, what we'll call a sunset provision in here where the city's commitment for both phases would terminate if phase one is not operational within 18 months of execution of the development agreement, and that the phase two commitment would terminate if it is not operational within 24 months of phase one.
All right, any questions for Mr. Millet? All right, thank you. I want to get a motion on the floor. Councilmember Clark.
I'll move approval of G 21.
Second.
Motion and second. All right, go ahead, Councilmember Cipio.
Mr. Millet, the sunset clause, it can come back to council, and we can revisit that like other sunset clauses, right?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Do have a motion and second. A motion by Councilmember Clark, seconded by Councilmember Cipio. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Motion passes with five in favor, three noes, and the motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Millet. All right, item G 22.
Item G 22, resolution authorizing recapture and reallocation of certain CARES Act funds.
Thank you. Assistant City Manager Tony, I believe you have some comments on this or... Oh, okay, sorry. Shantel, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, Mayor Pro Tim, members of the council. The CARES Act, we received, the city received CARES Act funds that we were using to prevent, prepare, and help with the coronavirus. We were able to spend most of the funds and meet two of the required deadlines. However, the remaining deadline to expend the rest of the funds is in September. And so we don't believe we will be able to expend those. It's $73,490, $73,490 in funds. And so rather than lose those funds, we are requesting that we reallocate them to programs that are already in effect for shelter operations. And that's what the item is here today, just to request a reallocation of those funds.
Okay, any questions for Shantel? All right, thank you. I would entertain a motion.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Adams, seconded by Councilmember Cipio. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Item G 23.
Item G 23, Mayor Pro Tim Adams' recommendation for reappointment to the Piedmont Triad Airport Authority. Mayor Allen Jones, term expiring June 2026.
Is there a motion?
I move for approval of item G 23 of the mayor's... I just drew a blank. Reappointment to the Piedmont Triad Airport Authority.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of that motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Appreciate that. Item G 24.
Item G 24, Mayor Jones' recommendation for appointments and reappointments to the Recreation and Parks Commission. Appointments, William Carpenter, term expiring May 2026. Melita Godditt, term expires May 2026. Reappointments, Michelle Portman, term expiring May 2026, and Taylor Ansley, term expiring May 2026.
Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Monday, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Adams. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. And anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item G 25.
Item G 25, Mayor Jones' recommendations for appointment to the City-City Planning Board. Lindsay Schwab, term expires February 2027.
Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember McIntosh, seconded by Councilmember Cipio. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item G 25.
Item G 26.
Six, excuse me.
Mayor Jones' recommendations for appointment to the Minority Women Business Enterprise Advisory Committee. Susan Morris, term expires February 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
I got a second.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember McIntosh, seconded by Councilmember Monday. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Item G 27.
Item G 27, Mayor Jones' recommendations for appointments to the City-City Utility Commission. Stephen Dotton, term expires June 2028.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember McIntosh, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Adams. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying yes. Voting yes, and anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item G 28.
Item G 28, Mayor Jones' recommendations for appointment to the Public Assembly Facilities Commission. Lyons Gray, term expires March 2026.
Vote for approval. Second.
Motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tim Adams, seconded by Councilmember Cipio. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item G 29.
Item G 29, Mayor Jones' recommendations for appointment to the Winston-Salem Transit Authority Board. Michael Flat, term expires March 2026. Natasha Ann Carter, term expires March 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cipio, seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Okay, that is unanimous. Thank you very much. And finally, item G 30.
Item G 30, Mayor Jones' recommendations for appointment to the Commission on Ending Homelessness. Category Seat Business Professional, Marcus Nelson, term expiring June 2026.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cipio, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Adams. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Or, excuse me, vote yes. If you want to oppose, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. So now go to the public comment period. And this, again, this is a time that we invite citizens to address myself and the council on items that are germane to city government. We will limit the comments to three minutes and 30 minutes total time. First person signed up is Tom Wood, please. Tom Wood. Thomas Burke, I think it is.
Tom.
If you will, please state your name and address for the record.
Thomas Burton.
And your address, please.
1541 Northeast 24th Street.
Thank you.
I just come to apologize to you guys for my behavior last week, especially you, Miss Cipio. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Joanne Allen?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, I didn't come to apologize to anyone. If anything, you all need to be apologizing to the residents of Winston-Salem. I had something prepared, but I'm going to go to something else based on just the budget meeting and everything. Just to be sure that the public, because that's who I'm really speaking to, understand what has just happened is this. We took about 35 minutes of the meeting to accuse so many different city council members from being able to vote on a particular bill, I mean, a particular item in all. And the problem is, is this. So basically, everyone on the council sits on an organization or nonprofit that is receiving city tax dollars. That's what the public need to understand. This is why you all had to accuse yourself, because every last one of these organizations or these nonprofits receive our city tax dollars. Okay? So don't have a problem with giving certain funds out or anything like that, but my goodness, what does that say about this city council? Because this is nothing new. What you all have been doing, you've been doing for a very long time, you know, going all the way back to 1999, 2000, and I'm here to say, wow, just think of all the other organizations that did not receive any money, but these did, because you all sit, you all sit on these organizations. So of course, your preference is going to be with these organizations as well. The public need to understand that, all right? Mr. Dan Bessie was talking about Wista, and let me tell you something. The, oh, gosh, the Wistas, the Campbell Bus Station is in the shape that it's in because of all of you all. We have no leadership here in Winston-Salem. You all sit back, and I don't know, maybe you all have just gotten so comfortable, you just look like, you know, well, okay, this is what we've been doing year in, year out. I'm glad to see that you did give the firemen, although they did have to request it more than once, a raise and everything, but it's just time. You all really are clueless when it comes to running this city, and I don't know if you all just don't go out and check how, how all the cities are being done or what have you, but you all are the deadest group of individuals. You show no compassion to the city unless we're coming here, banging on the door, saying, look, you need to provide money for this, and you need to provide money for that. The last thing, let me tell you, these employees, they deserve better. The city employees as well as the residents deserve better. Thank you.
Elaine Lawson?
Elaine Lamson, 215 Van Dyke Street. I just wanted to say good evening, Mayor Jones, Mayor Protem Adams, council members. As the new executive director for Mixer Community Makerspace at 1375 North Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, this evening, I just wanted to thank you all for your consideration on our funding. We're excited to be providing programming this summer to youth, sixth grades through 12th, in, in technology and systems that they would not otherwise be able to access, as well as to provide that education this summer to the school system. So I appreciate all of your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Hope you have a good summer. Matthew Myers?
I live at 2844 Wesleyan Lane. Thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening. Thank you also to this entire council and to lots of the city employees who have been doing work over the past several months, pushing the city in a more environmentally sustainable direction. There's a lot of us who really appreciate that. Hopefully, yesterday you got an email from me, and maybe you've had a chance to look at it, I don't know. I came tonight because I wanted to put an idea out there for you that a lot of the things that you've been doing in the sustainability front, I think probably all of them, have to do with city operations, and that's terrific. I think one of the things that you can also do is help people who are not part of the city government operations, namely the citizens, also to move in that direction. As you know, there's a lot of money available now, and more to come, for people and businesses to upgrade their buildings, to make them more energy efficient, to do weatherization, to put in modern, efficient electric appliances in place of fossil fuel-powered ones. It's not infinite money, and it's not going to last forever, but we have about a decade to get it done. Unfortunately, most people don't know about it, and as people become aware, a lot of folks are going to be overwhelmed by how do I get the money? What do I do with it? How do I get the work done in my home or my business? And what I'm hoping to urge you all to do is take that on, help people figure it out, help people get the work done. What some other cities around the country, quite a few other cities around the country now are doing are partnering with outside organizations, companies, like one called Block Power, that contract with the city, essentially get paid an administrative fee, but they can go out and do a whole bunch of the legwork. They figure out where the funding can come from, they provide favorable financing when necessary, they work with contractors, they organize it all, sometimes they even do bulk purchasing of things like heat pumps so that it's cheaper for everybody involved, and they get the job done. With a relatively low amount of outlay from the city, potentially a leveraging of up to 100 to 1 or more, so it's a pretty good investment. Now, it won't show up on your, your reports that show how much carbon the city operations are emitting, but it would be a huge effect for the city in terms of overall emissions. So I hope you'll take that under consideration. Next time I come back, hopefully in a month, Mr. Clark, I'll talk more about transportation, because I have some good idea, I hope good ideas there. I remember you asking Ms. Poplowski before she left to look for the good ideas other cities are doing. So thank you all, and I hope to see you in a month.
Thank you. Good suggestion on the word out, and we'll maybe ask our Sustainability Committee to take a look at that, Mr. Taylor. All right, that's all who'd signed up for a public comment. If there's anyone else who'd like to be heard during the public comment period? Yes, sir. If you'd just take your name and address for the record, please.
My name was on the list. Maybe I didn't--
I didn't see it.
Whatever. That's fine. That's okay.
Yeah, I did call you Tom Wood.
Tom Wood, yeah.
I called it earlier.
Oh, you did? I was probably, oh, I'm sorry. I'll just take a minute here.
That's okay.
My name's Tom Wood. I live at 2315 Jefferson Avenue, and I'm here as a advocate for the Winston Lake Golf Course. I moved down here from Michigan, Grand Rapids, Michigan, about 10 years ago, and been playing, I'm an avid golfer, I have been for many, many years, and I like to play all municipal courses when I can, and I, I learned about the history of Winston Lake Golf Course and, and how it was the only golf course for black players and, for many, many years, and some of the stuff that went on during the 60s and all that sort of stuff, and then the, the land being donated from the Benson Dairy, as I understand. I've been a member out there. I am a member this year and have been in the past, and I enjoy the course, I enjoy the people. I think they, Julius and the team out there are all very qualified, but I get the distinct feeling that the city undervalues the potential that's there. The potential of that golf course is, is to be, it could potentially be a crown jewel for the city. The city has done a wonderful job, in my estimation, at presenting itself as a, as a sort of a aggressive New South sort of a city, and the fact that it was just a course for black players, and now there, it's really a multicultural experience. There's a big Korean contingent, a lot of us white guys play out there, younger people, the schools use that golf course, and to have, to have it appear, to have only a marginal attention to it is a shame. The, as you know, the, the driving reins were shut down for several years because of the valuable work that you did at cleaning up Winston Lake itself, but it just seemed irresponsible, in my opinion, to not find someplace else to put that kind of stuff. And it just had an overall attitude towards this potential jewel, a potential drawing card. When you stop and think about it, some of the, and we have a golf state, and Torrey Pines is a municipal course. It's a PGA destination. Beth Plage Back is a municipal course, city-owned, as a potential destination, and I just think the city is missing that opportunity, and I want to be part of the solution.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. You'll be very happy to know that this budget we just approved had $1.7 million for Winston Lake improvements.
That's a good number.
Thank you.
And a nice start.
Thank you. We actually already spent, Ben, how much already recently is?
I'd have to get that information.
Several million we spent just recently. So we, we were very committed to it. I played there last Sunday. Didn't play well, but we were there. Anyone else? All right, I will close the public comment period and be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move for adjournment.
I'm sorry. Can I make a comment?
Yes.
On C26, that's the resolution fixing the public hearing for the voluntary annexation. We admitted the, at least on my version, the date is omitted in the resolution, that date should be August 7, 2023, just for clarification.
That's what mine says.
Okay.
Okay, good. For the record, it'll be August 7, 2023. Thank you. All right, the motion, Mayor Protem Adams, move for approval. Second. Second by Mayor, Councilmember McIntosh. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Anyone opposed? We adjourn.